This is City of Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM on Wednesday, July the 5th. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granberry, Texas, 76048. And I'd like to remind you again that you can see this meeting live on www.granberry.org/live. And it's also available for replay at some point in the future. We've called a order. If we could, at this point in time, I'd like to introduce Chaplain for the Hood County Sheriff Office, Mr. Terry Lubin. If you would say the infocation, sir. Please stand.
Heavenly gracious Father, Creator of all things, Lord, we give you thanks for who it is that you are and for what it is that you mean to each and every one of us. We thank you, Lord, for the many, many blessings in our lives, and we know that you are the Provider and the Giver of those. Lord, you have promised by your word to never leave us or forsake us. So, Lord, we welcome your Spirit here tonight, and I pray, Lord, that it hover over this room. And in doing so, Lord, that you guard our words and our thoughts, the actions that we take and the things that we say and do, so that each and every one of those would glorify you and honor you. impart to this council, Lord, your wisdom and your knowledge, but your strength and your courage, Lord, and conviction to do the right thing. Lord, I pray for all of our first responders, men and women of the police department, men and women of the sheriff's department, emergency medical people who respond to emergencies. Lord, I pray for your strength and courage for them, and I pray, Lord, that you keep them under your wing of protection. Lord, we are so thankful for you. There are so many things, Lord, that you are involved in, and we just pray for your involvement here in this meeting tonight. Lord, we love you, we need you, and we're so very thankful for you. And it's in your Son's name, Jesus Christ, that we pray.
You will go me now in place of allegiance to the American flag and to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. We have a proclamation. Someone will come out to the front, and I'm going to ask if the members of Memorial Way would come forward as well. So, I want to welcome from Memorial Way today is Ms. Julia Pennell, Mr. Bob Pennell, Laura Fisher, Chris Matthews, and Margaret Cook and Mike Donnelly. Thank you. Thank you all for coming up. And here's the proclamation, the official proclamation, and it's our Fallen Law Enforcement Officer Day. And it's a tragic day, but it's also a day that we want to memorialize. Whereas Governor Greg Abbott designated July 7 as Fallen Law Enforcement Officer Day in recognition of the ultimate sacrifice made by Texas law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. Whereas July 7 is the anniversary of an ambush-style attack that took the lives of five Dallas officers in 2016, this was the deadliest attack on U.S. law enforcement since September 11, 2001. And whereas it is our officers who put their lives on the line for us every day to ensure our safety and well-being, we must stand in support of these brave men and women, and their sacrifices must be remembered. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the City of Granberry, Texas, do hereby recognize July 7, 2023, as Fallen Law Enforcement Officer Day in Granberry, and ask that all citizens take a moment to honor the memory of these fallen heroes who died in the line of duty and to pray for their families and communities. It's given under my hand and the seal of the City of Granberry on this 5th day of July 2023. Jim Jarrett, Mayor. Thank you for coming up, and thank all of you, you gentlemen in the back. That's, I think, this is time for applause. We can't say thank you enough, and we can't say it too often. Thank you all for what you're doing for your families, and we pray for you every day. Thank you. There's also an additional ceremony will be held on the day of July the 7th here at Memorial Way. And the, let me give you the invite to that, because each and every one of you are invited. It's Texas Fallen Officers Ceremony. It's Friday, July 7th. There is a shuttle in the lot adjacent to the Memorial Park. It begins at 7:00 PM, and the ceremony is at 8:00 PM. It's hosted by these folks right up here, the Friends of Memorial Lane, and our own pro temp mayor, Trish Reiner, will be the speaker for that event. So, we have the invite out here. Here is the proclamation, official proclamation. And anybody wants to say? Well, then they should come right on up here, right? Yes. Gentlemen, ladies?
They need to be in it.
What she said.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We now have the City Council, City Manager, to issue any encouraging statements that they may have to recognize staff tonight. Mr. Kaufman?
I just want to take the opportunity. We had a great festival in our community, and the folks behind the scenes that hold us up and do that infrastructure for us are so much appreciated. That's the Parks Department, the Street Department, the Electric Department. I don't have an exact amount of how much time the Electric Department actually invested in, you know, running the wires and setting things up for the chamber with their event on all the vendors. And of course, the Chamber has an electric company that's on staff to oversee the safety of all that, but for the consumer end of it. But the Electric Department has done an outstanding job taking care of that. The Parks Department, you know, we just take it for granted. The bathrooms are always clean. That's because someone is always cleaning them. We had thousands of people on our square, and every, like clockwork, those restrooms were taken care of and cleaned, trash removal. We saw 88 hours of people doing cleaning during the event, continuing, was picking up trash out of the dumpsters on the square. It's just amazing, the work that the Parks Department does. And the Street Department, equally so. They put out all the barricades, all the no parking signs on the bridge, on 377 Pearl Street Bridge, all the no parking signs in neighborhoods where they protect it so we can have a fire lane for the fire truck in the event. We have an event with a fire. Just all these little things come into play, and at 5:30 this morning, they were out with the street sweeper. They were picking up those barricades and those signs and making our town back to normal. There was all kinds of litter here that was picked up. It's just incredible, the work that the public works. That includes the Street Department and then the Parks Department. All that is taken care of. I just wanted to give a shout out to them for that. And they power wash the sidewalks on the square every Monday morning before it opens. It's just amazing. So, that all goes to making a very nice weekend. And then our Communication Department, many of you may be aware that they livestreamed it, but Pat Abel, John Back, and Zach Maxwell are active volunteers with the communications team, and they all worked on the 4th of July to help livestream that event and coordinate it. And we had like 1,000 viewers the day of, and we're expecting about 2,500 views of the highlights video that our staff will put together. But anyway, we're extremely grateful to the volunteers that were involved, the police. I can't begin to brag about how much they do for us. I've been told that when they interview for the job to be a Granberry police officer, they're told that you'll never get a 4th of July off, because they won't. They work the whole time. Those guys are out there, and gals, are out there in that 100-degree heat with body armor on and long-sleeve shirts. Sometimes they get to wear the shorts, depending on if they're on Bike Patrol or not, but they are dressed with protective gear. And I'm just thankful that nobody overheated through this event, and they've served us with great honor. And wow, how about trying to get all these people out of here after the parade? And you saw the volunteers with the CPAA, the Citizen Patrol, you know, they're out there working and helping. It all goes together for a whole lot of people to make a great event in our town. Our visitor center was busy. You know, Tammy and her team do a great job facilitating. Listen, the beach had over 1,000 people at the city beach, and they were standing in line waiting for people to leave so they could go in. We had tourists that had came from two miles or two hours away to be at the city beach and couldn't get in because it was so full. So, that's a huge need for volunteers. You know, we got beach monitors, another successful year. To my knowledge, nobody on this lake drowned during the holiday, which is a blessing. With all the people and all the things going on and all the activities that could cause for accidents, we, none notable. So, a lot of people, a lot of working parts, and I'm excited to be a part of a great organization that put that together. So, all of you people, if I miss somebody, please forgive me, but all you people that had something to do with that know that you're appreciated by this council and by myself. We really do thank you for all that you do. And police officers, hats off to you for keeping us safe. It was incredible. We had contingency plans in case something happened. I'm thankful for that. Things that go on that people don't have a clue about are taken care of in ways that need to be taken care of, discreet, behind the scenes, in the event of. And so, thank you all again for everything you do. Thank you.
Counsel? Other comments? I know many of you were at the parade. I happen to be in town around the square at 7:00 on the night of the 4th, and I was up at 6:00 this morning on the square. It was nasty filthy when I left last night because of all of the, just things that people dropped this morning. It's already cleaned up. And Mr. Kaufman, it gives you an understatement when he says, well, this is, you know, this is just what we do. It's not just what we do. This is planned. It is put in the book. It is acted on, and man, let me tell you, it is appreciated. Thank you, sir. We now can, we'll go to public comments on the agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items. I have one request here, but this is a public hearing, I believe, so I don't have anything on that. I'm going to go ahead and go to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the City Council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Counsel, you've had an opportunity to read this since last Friday, I'm sure. Anybody have, need to pull anything off? I don't hear anyone asking to pull anything off the consent agenda, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have motions made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Burwell, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved 6-0. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move right to the deliberation agenda, 7.1. This is a public hearing. We'll have the information given up front, and if there is someone that we need to speak or would like to speak, please let us know at this point. So, 7.1 is Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 23-44, approving a request of Timothy Dale Reynolds for a specific use permit to allow a short-term rental residential unhoseded in a residential 7,000 on R7 zoning district. The property is addressed as 125 South Travis Street. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. On this, 7.1 through 7.4, I'm just going to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Kara Wowie, to walk you through these processes, and I'll just turn it over to you right now. So, feel free to call on her next time around.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see here. There you go. So, as we always share with you, our site location on this slide is outlined in teal. Again, the address is 125 South Travis. And this slide gives a neighborhood context, that is, what is the surrounding properties developed of? And primarily, the neighborhood consists of single-family residential as well as short-term rentals. A little further from the site, there are some commercial offices nearby. And this slide shows the zoning of the property. This is zoned for residential purposes, along with a historic preservation overlay. And this particular site is on the map. It's outlined in teal, and the surrounding properties are all zoned, the R7 HPO. That's residential historic preservation overlay districts. The history on this site related to short-term rentals, there was a 2019 SUP approved with a one-year unhoseded use with two guest suites. And in 2020, the SUP was approved for three years with the same structure, two guest suites. And this request is to renew that for a short-term residential unhoseded with two bedrooms. So, the use has remained unchanged throughout the course of those years, and staff is not aware of any concerns or complaints on this property. This is the context map that shows short-term rentals within 600 feet. That's what the circle shows. And those properties outlined in pink, and I guess there's a few there in black, show the short-term rentals in this area. So, there are a few. This is the site plan. Two bedrooms requires two parking spaces, so they're on the right side with the darker outlined. Those are the two parking spaces in the driveway, and they have adequate space. The site plan seems a little cut off on that slide. And then they're required to submit a floor plan, that's to demonstrate the location or that they only have the number of bedrooms that they're proposing, and this does show two bedrooms. This slide shows your specific use permit criteria for considering a specific use permit. We've gone over these several times. Again, as I stated in the other part of the presentation, this site has been used for a short-term rental for several years, so therefore with the criteria, one, is it harmonious and compatible? It certainly appears that it is harmonious and compatible in this neighborhood. The second one is, are the activities requested normally associated with the requested use? And they are. Is the nature of the use reasonable? It appears to be. It's located in the HPO mapped area, which has been designated for this use. And the final four, number four there, is have measures been taken to secure the public health, safety, and welfare? There are two parking spaces, and that complies with the requirements for the number of bedrooms. There are additional SUP criteria that are in zoning ordinance 111B, and I'll highlight the ones that are to speak to. Otherwise, the proposal meets these requirements. In recommending an SUP for the site, the P&amp;Z determined that the use is harmonious with surrounding area. And again, the parking headlight sweep would be screened. The P&amp;Z can recommend conditions, and the City Council may require conditions, so that would be part of your final action. The other standards in these criterias speak to the requirements of the city code as well as the zoning ordinance. And so, well, here's the public notice. On June 1st, staff mailed out 28 notices to owners of real property, and they are on the municipal tax roll as well and within 250 feet of the subject site. We also provided notice on the Hood County News Newspaper, and we've received nothing in favor, but we did receive one letter in opposition to the request. That was provided in your agenda packet. At the June 12th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval with seven conditions, the five-year term. As I believe you will remember, we're on a one-year anniversary of the new ordinance, so the term is being recommended with a five-year term if there's not been any concerns or complaints on the use of the property, and that there's been no changes. So, this property doesn't have any changes to the proposed number of bedrooms or use. There's a floor plan and a site plan, and then we recommend the screening be provided for the headlight sweep. That was new in the new Bed and Breakfast Short-Term Rental Ordinance, and the remaining conditions are standard. Staff has the same recommendation of approval, and these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you might have those.
Counsel have questions for Ms. Wowie? No? Let me go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that needs to speak? I see no one, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, any other comments, questions? Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
Mayor?
Ms. Burwell?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 23-44 as presented. Second.
Mr. Wadley, seconds. Ms. Burwell made the motion. I call for a vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will be approved 6-0. Okay. Ms. Wowie, you want to go ahead and go to 7.2, which is Consider Adopting Ordinance Number 23-45, approving a request of Catherine J. Casey for a specific use permit to allow a short-term rental residential unhoseded in a residential zoning district. The property is addressed as 210 South Lambert Street. Go ahead.
Sure. This one is similar to the 7.1 item that we just covered. It is located on 210 South Lambert and shown on your slide there, outlined in teal. The neighborhood context is single-family and short-term rental uses. And for the zoning, on your zoning map showed in yellow, the site outlined in teal is R7 and HPO. That's residential and historic preservation overlay. Also on this slide, we cover that this site has had a series of approvals, one in 2019 and one in 2020, for a short-term rental unhoseded, one guest suite, and the next year the same. The first one was for one year and the second for three years. This request would bring it into alignment with the new ordinance, requesting an SUP for a short-term rental unhoseded with two bedrooms. Staff is not aware of any complaints or enforcement over the last several years, and so, as we go through this, we'll get to the recommendation. This is your context map showing, outlined in pink and black, the short-term rentals within 600 feet of the site. This is the site plan. We have a little zoomed-in site plan there on the lower right that shows the parking spaces in the driveway. So, two bedrooms, two parking spaces. They have adequate parking. However, there is no screening for the headlight sweep on the north side of the property, so staff is recommending the installation of some shrubbery to provide that screening. And this is the floor plan, again, showing just two bedrooms in that floor plan. The SUP criteria, which is for consideration, is the proposed use, have any, is it harmonious and compatible with surrounding and existing uses? And the answer is yes. Are the activities requested by the applicant normally associated with the requested use? Yes. Is the nature of the use reasonable? The site is in the HPO area, which is designated and compatible for the proposed use. Are other measures being taken to protect the community? And that goes to the headlight sweep screening. These are the additional criteria that are incorporated into your staff report, basically request or ask the questions whether the use will be compatible and harmonious to the area, and it is. Again, repeating the headlight sweep to provide screening. And the City Council may require conditions. The other items on this list speak to the city codes and requirements in the zoning ordinance. On June 1st, staff provided mailings to 31 community property owners, and we also provided on May 27th, Hood County Newspaper notice as required. We have received two letters in favor and one letter in opposition to the request. And this is your recommendation for the Planning Commission. They recommended a 7-0 vote for these seven conditions with approval, and these include a five-year term. Again, the analysis being that this site is continuing what was approved in the past and there have been no concerns or considerations of any changes. Subject to the site plan and the floor plan, as well as that screening, and limited to the two bedrooms as explained, the remainder are referencing the city code as well as the zoning ordinance. And staff recommendation for approval reflects those same conditions. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Counsel, questions for Ms. Wowie? No questions? Let me go ahead and open this public hearing at this point in time, ask the audience, is there anyone who wants to present? I see no one, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, one more time. No questions? Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 23-45, approving a request of Catherine J. Casey for a special use permit to allow a short-term rental residential unhoseded in a residential R7 zoning district? Property is addressed as 210 South Lambert Street.
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes motion?
Second.
Mr. Wadley makes second. Call for a vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved 6-0.
And this is your recommendation for the Planning Commission. They recommended a 7-0 vote for these seven conditions with approval. And these include a five-year term. Again, the analysis being that this site is continuing what was approved in the past and there have been no concerns or considerations of any changes. Subject to the site plan and the floor plan, as well as that screening, and limited to the two bedrooms as explained. The remainder are referencing the city code as well as the zoning ordinance. And staff recommendation for approval reflects those same conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Counsel, questions for Ms. Wai? No questions? Let me go ahead and open this public hearing at this point in time, ask the audience, is there anyone who wants to present? I see no one, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, one more time. No questions? Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 23-45 approving a request of Catherine J. Casey for a special use permit to allow a short-term rental residential unhosed in a residential R7 zoning district? Property is addressed as 210 South Lambert Street.
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes motion?
Second.
Mr. Wadley makes second. Call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved 6-0. We'll go to item number 7.3, consider adopting ordinance number 23-46 approving a request of Ava Royer for a specific use permit to allow a short-term rental residential unhosed in a residential R7 zoning district. The property is addressed as 520 West Bluff Street. Ms. Wai?
Sorry there.
7.3.
Yes, sir. This is the location slide with the site being outlined there in teal. So it's there at 520 West Bluff Street. And the neighborhood context is single-family residential and short-term rental. I should mention, as you go north from the street, from this site up to Pearl, there is some commercial along Pearl Street. This is your zoning map. The yellow shows the R7 zoning for residential purposes. And the overlay of the site is the historic preservation overlay. This site was approved in 2022 for an SUP for a one-year short-term rental unhosed with three bedrooms, and the request remains the same with the three bedrooms proposed. This is the 600-foot radius showing short-term rentals within that 600-foot distance, and those are outlined in pink on this map. This is the site plan for the site. The site plan is very similar to what the first previous approval was for, except that, as you'll see in the floor plan, which is the next slides, the Historic Preservation Commission approved a modification to the house, which adds a second floor to the house. And as a result of that, then, the existing is still there today, they haven't reconstructed the house, but there was an, is an existing carport attached to that bottom-left portion of the building, and that has been enclosed to a garage. So they have three bedrooms and three parking spaces on the property without having to go into a building. So there's two parking spaces towards the top of the plan, and there is access to the home from that backyard. So those parking spaces, people who park in those parking spaces won't have to walk down the street and around. And then the third parking space is there at the front, and again, the additional garage parking. So this is the floor plan that was approved in 2022. And on the right side of this floor plan, you see all three of the bedrooms. The other rooms in the building are other bathrooms, there are two bathrooms on the first floor, and there are other living spaces. So on the left there is where that enclosed garage is. And now I'm going to move on to the Historic Preservation Approved Floor Plan, which is presented with this SUP today. Okay? So above that dashed line is the second floor that's being added to this house. The carport, as had been mentioned, is being enclosed. And where the stairs are, that was a utility room, and that's going to be converted to access the upstairs. There'll be a utility room, a playroom, and an open space as well as a bathroom on that second layer, or second level. I think that's been referred to as a loft as well. There's a portion of that that overlooks the below rooms. Okay? There we go. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this, and the city council is reviewing this tonight. And these are your criteria for review. The question is first, is it harmonious and compatible with the surrounding uses or proposed use? This is the second request for this site. It is being changed to add a second floor. So the property hasn't been vetted with that second floor use as a short-term rental. And you'll see in our recommendations, we have a shorter term for this particular project. Other than that, is the use harmonious and compatible with the neighborhood? We find that it is. Are the activities requested by the applicant normally associated with the requested use? Yes. Is the nature of the use reasonable? It appears to be. It's in the historic preservation mapped area, which has been designated for these uses. And are other measures to secure and protect the public health and safety, welfare being taken? The parking spaces are available, so three bedrooms, three parking spaces provided. And then these are the additional criteria that somewhat repeat the past stated criteria. Based on the information provided, the use appears to be harmonious with surrounding uses. And the parking provides some screening there. However, it appears that the parking headlight sweep along the south driveway, that went onto Bluff, isn't screened, although parking to the north is screened. And then to grant the SUP, the council may impose conditions. Let's see. And the remaining conditions are primarily related to city code and requirements of the zoning ordinance. And on June 1st, staff mailed out 22 public notices to property owners. Notice was also provided on May 27th in the newspaper. And we've received no letters in favor and two letters in opposition to the request. This is your Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation with a 7-0 unanimous vote to approve with these conditions. Again, we said the change in the site, we're recommending a shorter timeframe, that being one year, to prove out that they truly are harmonious with the community's area. And also providing a condition to the site plan and floor plan, and tying it to the three bedrooms as proposed. And the remainder relate back to the zoning ordinance and city code requirements. Staff has the same recommendation. And these are your voting options. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have those. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? No questions? It's a public hearing. I will go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone who wants to speak on this matter. I see no one raising their hand, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, no more questions? Do I hear a motion to consider to adopt ordinance number 23-46 approving a request of Ava Royer for a specific use permit to allow a short-term rental residential unhosed in a residential 7,000 or R7 zoning district? Property is addressed as 520 West Bluff Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vail.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2340-46 as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Burwell seconds. Mr. Vail's motion. So take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It will pass. It's approved 6-0. Thank you, counsel. Then we'll go to number 7.4, which will also be a public hearing. Consider the following request of Texas Neighborhood Services to, one, adopt ordinance number 23-47 amending the future land use map contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan from public slash semi-public to retail slash office. And number two, adopt ordinance number 23-48 rezoning from business commercial, B.C., to light commercial, L.C. The property is lot 2, block 1, Larned subdivision, and is located at 1600 West Pearl Street. Ms. Wai?
Thank you. This is the site context slide, showing an aerial of the site location along with the properties nearby. This site is located along Pearl at Stone Street. And the neighborhood context includes various residential as well as retail and office uses. I'm going to present on this slide for a second here to explain the existing condition of the site and the surrounding uses. The site is improved with a commercial property that was used as a head start or a daycare for several years, and has remained vacant for several years. The site is as improved as a commercial building. Would be difficult to transition that back to a residential building. The properties to the east and to the west are unimproved, and then residential is primarily to the north and to the west. However, intervening between this site towards the north and the residential to the north is an existing daycare building. And then to the south is where most of the nearby commercial uses are, and to the east is a government center. That's the uses in this area. This is the future land use plan map, the existing showing the public semi-public use. This public use or semi-public use can go almost anywhere on a future land use map, and it signifies uses that are related for the public. Usually those are government buildings or schools. In this case, it was designated in reflection of federally funded head start use. The proposal would change that blue on the map to retail office, which, along Pearl, and in consideration of the context of the site, makes sense, and staff, as well as P&amp;Z, is recommending approval of that. And this is narrative that we provided in our staff report explaining the public semi-public use, which I just stated. And this is the proposed use for retail and offices. Retail offices include retail, trade of goods and services, offices, office somewhere where people work in an office setting. And it also allows, going back to this proposed use, the retail would correspond to the commercial district that's being proposed. So in the administration of the future land use plan, development proposals should follow the plan, and when changes are proposed, these are just some of the questions that can be asked, and these include, will the proposed change enhance the site in the surrounding area? Well, the building's been empty for several years, and it needs some type of use. It's obviously not being used for a public purpose, so a change in that context makes sense. The site is also on a heavily traveled street. So retail makes sense there, too. And the series of questions go along those lines about, will the proposal be appropriate to the site, and are there city facilities available? So the facilities are there, as you can see on the map. The roads are there. It's been used in the past for a purpose that required water and sewer, so all those facilities are available. Related to the zoning, the requested zone change is from business commercial, which is primarily an office use, to a light commercial use. That changes to a retail use, which I've explained, the site is on Pearl, it's a heavily traveled street. Retail may make more sense there. Not that office can't go into a light commercial district, it can. So the change would result in the existing building having some nonconformity to setbacks. However, that's not unusual when a zone change might take place, as just happens that in this case, it would be a nonconforming to setbacks and setbacks only. And these are your zoning ordinance considerations. We've walked through many of these already. I don't see a reason to spend too much time on that. If we want to, we can go back. Public notice was provided on June 1st to 20 parties that own property nearby, and on May 27th to the Hood County newspaper as required. And we have received no letters either in favor nor in opposition to the request. The prior board and commission recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the future land use plan amendment by a vote of 6 to 0. There was one abstention. And on the zone change, the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of the zone change by a vote of 6 to 0, and there was one abstention. Staff is recommending approval of both requests. And these are your voting options. You would take the future land use plan amendment first, and then the change of zoning request. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, do you have questions? Kara, I just have one on the, just orient me. The map with the red and the blue and, you know, the public semi-public, where it was in blue?
Yes, sir.
Is one of the properties, it looks like, I guess, what I'm looking at, then I turn the map and I go to, you know, the business commercial, and there's two homes, houses, structures on that page. There's only one on this one. Yeah. That one.
This one? So the subject property is the one that's outlined in teal. The business commercial to the north is an existing daycare center?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vail.
So Kara, what we're voting on tonight is amending the land use map, number one. And number two, it's just a rezoning, correct? So this has nothing to do with any kind of SUPs for anything else having to do with the business, right?
That's correct.
Those two pieces. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Well, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to call a public hearing into session. Hear anyone that wants to speak. I see no one that's raising their hand. So I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, other questions? Comments? No? Okay. So, voting options. We'll have two options on this. We'll approve the request of Texas Neighborhood Services to adopt ordinance number 23-47 amending the future land use map contained within the 2016 comprehensive plan from public dash semi, from public dash semi-public to retail slash office. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. That's for number one. I call a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. Number two section is, we will adopt ordinance number 23-48 rezoning from business commercial, B.C., to light commercial, L.C. The property is lot 2, block 1, Larned subdivision, and is located at 1600 West Pearl Street. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vail has a second. I call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays, so both of these have been approved as 6-0. Okay. That concludes the deliberation agenda for tonight. We'll move along to number eight, City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust Meeting. And to get to that meeting, I say, I now declare the Granbury City Council is in open session. The council will recess the regular meeting and will convene the City of Granbury Benefits Trust Meeting. So this meeting is now convened. We will come back to the other meeting and the other agenda items upon the completion of this session. Mr. Ross?
Take it away, Michael. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. We are here this evening. It's our annual renewal time for our insurance, medical insurance for the city. We have been with Blue Cross Blue Shield for a few years now, and so they are normally the first ones we go to to check on renewal rates. Their initial renewal rate was about 29% higher than the current rate. With that being said, our consultant, Higginbotham Michael Parks, was successful in getting them to lower that renewal rate down to 22%. Since there was such a significant increase, he also asked for proposals from other competition. And Aetna came in with a 38% increase, and United Healthcare was 33%. We, because of that, think that the 22% renewal rate is the best bet for the city. We did, Michael also asked for higher deductible plan designs, just so we could see what that looked like. The rate did come down some, but we're already a high, kind of a high deductible employer from that perspective, competition-wise with other competing cities our size. And so we are recommending the 22% increase for the Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical Insurance. We recommend to stay with Dearborn National for our group life, including voluntary life, short-term disability, long-term disability, with no increase in the premium being proposed. Voluntary employee-paid accident and critical illness insurance would remain with Lincoln at no increase. And voluntary employee-paid dental would remain with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Vision. And Vision Insurance would stay with the same carrier, and both would have no increase recommended. recommended. Our recommendation is to approve the city's annual health insurance renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And Michael Parks, the managing partner with Higginbotham, is here as well. Thank you.
Counsel, do you have questions of Mr. Ross or Mr. Parks? The spreadsheet and the analysis that you provided to counsel has been digested.
Thank you, Mayor.
Not sure that we have any other suggestions for you. Counsel? No? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the city's annual employee health insurance renewal with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Texas?
So moved.
Ms. Burwell makes a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Vale makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It's approved 6-0.
Hey, Michael, do we need another motion for any of the other?
Yes.
Yes. Can you come up and tutor us through the agenda items that you recommend, and vote on them one at a time, or as a single motion for everything? The motion that we had was for the Blue Cross Blue Shield only. I know. I know, but you named off a whole lot of other vendors there that need to be.
Most of them are voluntary. The city doesn't pay anything.
Okay.
And so there's no, there's no impact.
Do you want to come up, Michael, if there's a?
On the Dearborn.
Was there an increase on the Dearborn?
No. It was the same rate as well, just like the year.
No other increases anywhere?
No.
I just want to clarify that, that was buzzing around up here.
Yeah. Blue Cross Blue Shield, the medical is the only portion that went up. The dental, vision, life, long-term, short-term, voluntary, life, critical illness, all, no change in rates this year, without changing any of the current vendors.
Other questions? I did have a motion up here that we would approve the minutes from June 21st, 2022.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes a motion. Ms. Burwell seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. There are other items for Mr. Ross?
Hold on, please, they say. They're reviewing to make sure.
There's no other, no other amounts. The rest are all well under 50, the one is well under 50,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Five thousand.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Park.
Thank you, Michael, Michael. Both of you.
Yeah. I now declare the City of Granbury Benefits Trust Meeting is now closed. The Granbury City Council is now reconvened into open session. We'll move to number nine. Citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. Citizens have a, speakers have a time limit of three minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda. City Council will be allowed to receive input or information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into discussions. I do have one request from Ms. Eva Royer. If you would come and give us your name and your address, that would be, and your message, please.
Hi, Eva Royer, 520 West Bluff. First, I wanted to say thank you for reapproving my SUP for my short-term rental on Bluff. Secondly, I am excited to share with you guys that Governor Abbott has approved House Bill 2835. We are renaming the six-mile stretch in front of Happy Hill Farm the Edgewood Shipman Memorial Highway. And as you guys may know or may not know, Happy Hill Farm started here in Granbury, and then they moved out to 144. So with the, the authors were Senator, yeah, well, the sponsor was Senator Burns, but the authors were Representative, I'm sorry, Senator Birdwell and Flossin and Burns actually were the author of our bill, and it went through the House, and Governor Abbott has signed it. So on September 1st, 2023, TechSta will be erecting a sign for six-mile stretch on 144, and we are renaming it the Edgewood Shipman Memorial Highway. I did bring it to Mayor Jarrett that we were asking for a proclamation that on that date that you guys, City Council, would consider that. So I'm asking that if you guys, as a whole, would consider that on September 1st, where we will actually have a dedication proclamation days for any Hood County Commissioner Courts, they're considering it, as well as Somerville Commissioner Courts as well. So we just want to make it a big deal for the City of Granbury because it did start here, and that it would actually bring a lot of recognition. Hood County News has done two articles about it already. They plan to be there. All the news outlets will be there on that day. We're going to have a ribbon-cutting VIP ceremony, and all of that will happen. And a lunch, you guys are all invited, so you will be getting an actual invitation. But I wanted to share it here publicly so that the City of Granbury and City Council was aware of what was happening in your backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you would speak with our city secretary just after this, because the phone number we have here only has nine digits, and we need 10 so that we can reach out and contact you regarding this.
Sure.
Okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other, no other notices to speak? Based on no other business, I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened into open session, that all members are present. City Council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 551-072, deliberation regarding real property. Section 551-087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. Vanchy Hospitality Development Agreement. And Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, attorney pending or contemplated litigation. We'll now go into executive session. Thank you. I now declare the Granbury City Council reconvenes into open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and all council members are present. Counsel, any?
Mayor.
Ms. Burwell.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Vanchy Hospitality for the use of onsite sewage facilities. I can't read this. For the, pending the termination of the current City of Granbury moratoriums. Sorry about that.
And I'll second.
I hear a motion. It's been recorded. I hear a second. Any other comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes with 6-0. So, any other comments, questions?
Mayor.
Ms. Burwell.
I have a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a development agreement with Granbury Nissan for the use of onsite sewage facilities pending the termination of the current City of Granbury moratoriums.
Okay.
I second that.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion? You seconded or motioned?
She made the motion. I seconded.
You made the motion, okay. Ms. Burwell makes a motion. Mr. Wadley seconds. Discussion? No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. Counsel, anything else? Ms. Burwell?
Yes, sir.
Well? Everybody? Okay. There being no further business, I announce the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Aye.